City Council Regular Meeting Order for Monday, June 23 at 7:03 PM. Roll call looks like all members are with us this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under a single banner. The Constitution of this country.
All right, thank you. Look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to approve tonight's, make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with an amendment switching number six and number seven, doing number seven first and then doing number six.
That's your motion by Councilmember Cook to amend tonight's agenda, switching number six inside or having special business before matters on the floor, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the agenda, switching six and seven in the order tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion?
I'll just explain why. We have Commissioner Lundey here and we have Ed Columbus here, and I would like to be able to honor their time, knowing that we have several different speakers speaking in matters to the floor, so to allow those presentations to happen prior to matters of the floor. I think it's just respectful to those people, so that's my, that's why.
Okay. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number five, consent agenda. Any questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
Move adoptions, consent agenda.
Got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's consent agendas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number six, special business, six A, District One, Commissioner update. Welcome, Commissioner Lundey. Glad you found your way back to Osseo.
Yes.
I don't know if I have to get that clicker or if you...
Yep, here we go.
First, I want to thank you. I'll, you know, Brook and Park paid me the favor of putting me last of the agenda, so I just want to say kudos to you guys, thank you. I'll try to return the favor by being fast. So just, let's see if I got that right.
Probably mad at me here. Something merry-hall.
I can't get remote, I've hit every button, so nothing.
Batteries are out.
Can you make it go?
Yeah, I can just, I can just click ahead for you.
Okay, perfect. If you just want to go to the next one?
Okay. Oh, no, that doesn't want to do that either.
Well, it's giving a long presentation from, suck on slide one.
I'm just gonna try it again. Okay. I swear it worked when I tested it. Sorry, one sec.
Do you have that on a drive? Did you see?
Yeah, I'm on the S drive right now.
No, I mean, Councilmember Lundey, did you bring a jump drive?
Yeah, do you have a jump drive?
Why don't we do that off the jump drive, Alicia?
Okay.
It just locked up on you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just hoping that's not the one with my fantasy football league picks for this fall. I don't need to share that research out.
It might be because this computer is pretty outdated.
Well, I can do it this way.
Can you show the version through the packet?
Yeah, can you just bring the packet up?
Yep, there we go. What's going on here? There we go. There we go.
Perfect.
All right.
You can go to the next slide, please. Just, I always like to highlight and as, as I always do, no matter how many times I look at the slide, I forget to remove the word Emma from the top, but Emma is one Assistant Policy H, she'll be with me through this year. Both of my policies, Rich Natta and Ingrid, are doing their best to help increase the population of young kids, and so I've got a special person to help throughout this year as they go through maternity leave. So Natta will be back in July, Ingrid will be expecting the birth of her first child in the fall. So I put those numbers up there because, as I always say, if you need anything, obviously I give everyone my cellphone, but anybody in my office can answer questions and we'll get answers back as soon as possible, so. Leadership things, just always list them. If it's public safety at the county, I'm probably chairing it, so working on that. Just completed the term as co-chair of the Task Force of the State Legislature on Youth Interventions. Next slide, please. Just briefly, we continue to build out safe communities, which is an endeavor that started in 2021. We try to work with communities on how do we tackle, you know, whether it's crime or whether it's things that are happening in our communities, whether it's a park takeover where you get 250 kids show up at a park that isn't illegal, it can be problematic, it can oftentimes lead to something, but, so we've been continuing to invest in that. Next slide, please. So one thing that we have been doing is working with Cities United, which is an organization nationally to help cities develop plans. So rather than having the counties say, here's what you should or shouldn't do, here's what we think is best or not best, what we've done is try to connect, and so we've basically paid for any city that wants to take part in the Cities United effort to kind of look at your plans, how do you deal with youth? You have a high school here, so not all youth that come to Osseo live in Osseo, and so those kind of things about how can you tackle those things. Osseo is unique and yet they're like everyone else. There are a lot of small cities that have similar challenges, who have to work through this and sometimes learning from others. Next slide, please. So this fall, I heard you talking about budgets, I don't think anybody's budget is good, but if you have budget for anybody to attend the Cities United, Hennepin County will be hosting some breakout sessions just for Hennepin, so we expect about 20 cities countywide to take part in that. And really, again, it's just the idea that there are tactics that you can use, things that you can kind of bring to a community to start to look at things. You don't have to be a big city to have a big city event. I mentioned the park thing by, on purpose, because Crystal's had one already this year. Last year, they had a couple, Brook and Park have it, and really, it's just, you know, 99% of the kids there are just there because their friends are there, and usually there's the 1% that are the problematic ones. And so within that kind of controlled chaos of 400 kids showing up, if you have 1%, that's four people, and if you have presence of a gun, then you have something else going on. So there are tactics, there are things you can do, outreach, and so we're going to continue to build that out, and just know that in our mind, it's not just a Minneapolis thing, it happens anywhere and everywhere. I think Medina had a small one, and so kids go where they are, and you know what the fact is, I think is important thing, you know, when I talk about kids, is 99.8% of the kids in Hennepin County have nothing to do with the justice system. But if you turn on the news or social media, you think kids are the root cause of everything. So 0.2% of our kids aren't getting in trouble. And so I mention that on purpose because I think sometimes we tend to think everything that kids do, some of these events are problems, and they're not. And so it's really just a few, and so we're really concentrating on them. Next slide, please. You can go higher to cover that. So a few things that we're working on is, is there a slide before that? I think. Okay, just keep going.
Okay.
So there's three prongs that we're working on. We're looking at the state, we're looking at the region, and we're looking at Hennepin. This deals with the task force that I help co-chair. It really identified the number of the things that state needs to do different. Unfortunately, as we were completing our report, we found a report from 1997 that said exactly pretty much the same thing that we were saying, and the state had enacted no changes. And so we have been lobbying for the state to make these changes. There are things that the state could do if somebody in this room said they wanted to help kids. It would take you 18 to 24 months to get your first license, it would then take you about six months after that to get certified to do different programs, so that's 24 months before your first paying customer would arrive. That means you have to go two years before you even have $1 of revenue. Most places, it's not worth it. Oftentimes, you'll hear people say that there isn't a place to send kids, especially kids with mental health challenges. The fact is, the state, 1/3 of the beds in the state of Minnesota are not staffed. So we have a higher capacity. The problem is the way the state rules are set up, the way things are funded. People can make more money working at Taco Bell than they can working 7 by 24 at a facility where they're dealing with high-risk, high-need youth that have mental health challenges. So do the math. Taco Bell sounds a lot easier, and you get paid more. And so that's part of the problem with a lot of these places around the state, is that they simply do not have the money and they're not reimbursed at the rate. Why is that your problem, you may ask, or why is that the Hennepin Counties? Because anything the county has to do, we only have one fund for public safety, that's property taxes. So as the state is not reimbursing at the rate that they commit to, that means we have to make up the difference. So when we send kids from Hennepin County to a facility, it is Hennepin County property taxpayers' money that's used to fill in the gaps because we can't get movement at the state level. And I'm, last summer, I was talking about my partners at the State Legislature, we, every legislator say, talk about how they want to make changes, I always look at what got passed, nothing got passed. So I think really, we're going to start to really try to ask them to zip it up, because this is something that we cannot, I can't change state law, neither can you, we can't change how things are done, how they're reimbursed, we can't do a lot of the things, only the state legislature and the governor can make those changes. And so until we get those changes, we are working with an imperfect system, that imperfection uses property tax money. Next slide, please. So you can go to the next one, we talked about that. So that's the old slide, you can turn slide deck off, I can already see it's off. So anyway, so three things, right? I can do it from memory. One, we have the statewide changes, second thing is, we have the regional system. So right now, Hennepin County, working with the seven counties in the region, all the metro counties are partnering up to see how can we cover those gaps that the state is not covering. And so what we're doing is saying, okay, NOCA's got a really good facility, we're going to use an NOCA's facility for this type of need. Dakota County's got a good facility, Hennepin's got a good facility. So we're, rather than each county, because everything is built around each county, doing their own thing, is we're going to start to partner and try to find out where people... So as I much like to say, if you're having a barbecue and people are saying what they're going to bring, that's what the regional framework is doing, they're saying, what can each of us bring to the table to take care of youth? Obviously, if you have youth that are found mentally incompetent, they are done with the justice system. Sure, Chief knows that, the moment they're ruled incompetent, they're done. Unlike adults, where if they're ruled incompetent, the charge still hangs out there until they regain competency. When it comes to youth, they are done in the justice system. So when that competency is determined, then they're out. And so what happens is, in Minnesota, is we have two systems, we have a Department of Health and Human Services, and we have a Corrections, and these are two different systems, and kids bounce back and forth. So what the counties are doing is say, okay, we're waiting for the state to help us, we're coming up with kind of basically a Band-Aid, Induct Tape approach, where I will also give the state credit, they have started to look at waivers so that we can start to experiment with things. And the third part is, Hennepin County is standing up what's called a crisis center, and so that'll be 10 to 15 beds for youth that are in crisis. Could be someone that Chief rests, right? Or it could be just somebody, a family is having a kid who's having mental health challenges and is not involved with the justice system. Or it could be a kid that's identified in the school has had any needs. So no longer are we saying that you have to go to court to get sent to this place, we actually can take kids where they are, and so we don't have to wait till they commit a crime, or wait till they commit an act of violence to actually get them. So this facility will be open probably September. You will receive, Chief will as well, invite to come tour it. So this is a different type of facility, it's where a lot of people talk about they want therapeutic help for kids, but in their mind, they're thinking 12-foot walls, barbed wire, four-legged razor blades running around, that's not a therapeutic center. So we're going to invite everybody in for two days, so please look for that, I'll send reminders if you want to come see what a therapeutic center for youth is. I think it's important, even despite Osseo's size, we have a large high school here. And so these things will happen, they do happen, and so we know that, we're going to try to help people understand what this is. So this crisis center will be 30 to 45 days. It's meant to get kids, get them stabilized. So what happens is a kid starts to commit a crime, in the past, they would kind of escalate over a period of weeks. What's happening now is kids escalate in days. So they commit their first crime on a Monday, by this weekend, they've done a carjacking. And the pattern is faster, the speed of which they go from something small to something big, and so we need places to put kids as we try to find a way to stabilize them. So we're kind of working all three prongs, and I really talk about the state, we need their help, because everything that I've talked about is funded through property taxes. And so when we talk about needing their help, we need them to be part of the puzzle. They are setting the rules, they're setting the stage, and every county has to pay. Blessing for Hennepin is, we have the resources, there's other counties that simply do not. There are counties, I think the smallest is Traverse, 3,400 people, that's the size of their county, which is like Osseo. So imagine if Osseo had to fund youth interventions for youth, find placements for kids in trouble, and so this is where kind of that mismatch happens. Couple other things just to mention, Blue Line Project does move forward, and so right now, through the end of this summer, I don't know if Osseo, I believe you might have got a request on environmental, I would defer on that, since you're not on the line, but you're close, I don't know how far they went, but through the end of the summer, will be environmental impact, there'll be statements on traffic, like Crystal's talking a lot about traffic, they're talking a lot about if they have a station, access to public safety data so that they can make changes like that. There's other things that might happen, whether 81 shrinks from six to four lanes, that things all goes to the environmental. If you're asked to provide answers, the environmental impact is always the worst-case scenario. So it is not what is likely, it is, we have to assume the worst, and that's certified to the government. So if there's a potential to take three houses, but on the map, there could be 200, we have to act like all 200 are being taken. That's not what's going to happen, but that's how the environmental impact is, you have to declare what impacts are going to be there, and what mitigations. We continue to work through the project at the federal level, we continue to hear about it. The question I'm always asked is if the money doesn't come, it's going somewhere else. And I get the idea, it's not going back in the budget, it's not going to cut the deficit, it'll go to the next in line, which I think is Nashville. Salt Lake City's ahead of us, there's kind of a tiered structure as you go through the process, so we think it's a valuable part. What it is going to spur, and I think this is where Osseo may want to be interested, is it will spur east-west transportation. So right now, buses go downtown pretty regular, but they don't go east and west. For like Brook and Park, if you're in East Brook and Park, you cannot get to West Brook and Park on a bus. You have to leave the city, go down Brooklyn Center, and then come back out, or you have to go farther out. So we don't actually have a good bus line to go back and forth. Maple Grove does not hook with it, and so that's one of the problems. So I think you'll see some calls this fall for council input from cities not on the line, but who would be affected by having buses. Who, people love them, hate them, but at the end of the day, people who want them, they want to live near a bus. You guys have a great walkable Main Street, you have a great place, if there is a bus line that can, where people walk, catch the bus, and I think move on to their day. So the last slide is just about budget amendments, a couple I think I'd just share with you. So budget amendments are commissioners can in the fall, which is different than city council, we can bring amendments, right, from ourselves, if we can get the votes, or we can take money, whether it's reserves or reallocate money for a project that we want to try. The one that I just wanted to highlight for here is that there will be a study done this fall on the cost of law enforcement. And that's not a negative cost, that's not a positive cost, it's just a cost, and really to look out five and 10 years to see where is it headed. So I think a lot of people are, you know, filling in the holes with property taxes, we don't know in 10 years what the future of law enforcement is. Do we, are we refilling what we're losing, are people retiring faster than we're adding? Are we just stealing? Because right now, that's what we're doing. The pot of staff hasn't really changed much, they're just moving from city to city, the bonuses and the pay increases are going with it, and we're hoping that study will allow, it will look at every jurisdiction in the county, so the sheriff, cities, transit, park, will all be part of it to just say, what does the future look like in 10 years? Are we going to have enough people? Are we going to have enough people in the fact that we're going to grow another 300,000, which means we're going to need more officers than we do today? And so really, to provide a blueprint for people to understand, like yourselves, what is the cost going to be? What can we do? Are there things that we can offload onto non-police functions, like mental health? I think, I don't know if the mental health unit, I think it's been active here a little bit.
We're through the dispatch center.
Yep.
So yep, we do that.
So the Brooklands have 911 that they'll respond to mental health calls, so that a police officer doesn't have to respond, so there's ways that we can do some of that, and we'll keep building out. But that report will be done this fall, it'll be provided to every jurisdiction in this county to help provide guidelines. It doesn't tell anybody what to do, it just says, where are we going to be, how many people are we going to have in 10 years, and what are the costs? It's very much a macro study, it doesn't get into labor negotiations, it just says, here's what the cost, and here's where we're headed. So with that, I'll stop.
Questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor, welcome, thank you for the, for the presentation. Off topic, but it was something discussed earlier, if I wanted to speak to somebody about Hennepin County libraries from like your level, who do I speak to?
That second slide, with any one of us, so myself. And so absolutely.
So I can just reach offline?
Absolutely, yep. And we will probably, if it's questions, we'll kind of be a connector and host, and try to get answers to your questions, if there's changes that need to be made or requested, all that kind of stuff really cycles through.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, 6B, Citizen Award Presentation.
Want to come up? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to hand out an award to one of our longtime, well-known citizens in town, Mr. Columbus. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Ed is also part of the Lions Club, he's worked for the city, you've been here forever, what else?
No.
Our officers, part of our award policy is, our officers can nominate citizens or anybody if there's ever a good deed that they feel is warranted. So I did receive a award submission for Mr. Columbus. Back in, I think it was March 22 of this year, our night shift crew went over to the Holiday Gas Station about 4 o'clock in the morning to encounter a elderly gentleman that had been there for about four or five hours. Officers learned that he had walked from northern Maple Grove, near the Champlin border, to the Holiday in 18-degree temperatures and was stranded at Holiday without a cellphone. They learned that he had been locked out of his house, he had no cellphone, he had no family, and nobody to contact to get him back, to get him into his house. And he's also a victim of identity theft and credit card fraud, so he really didn't have any funds either, so he's kind of stranded. So our officers, Zitzelberger and Laterno, drove him back to his house, and they tried to get into his house for him, but were unsuccessful. So Officer Laterno, just from prior knowledge, knows that Mr. Columbus has an extensive history in breaking into houses. A few, in the locksmith industry. So Brett called, Officer Laterno called Ed about 5 o'clock in the morning, and without delay, he was there in just a few minutes, was able to break into the house, so without any causing any damage. And Mr. Columbus didn't accept any payment, and he did this out of the goodness of his heart. So I think it's important that we recognize good deeds done by our citizens, it's a great example of the great people that we have working here, and we want, I'm sorry, living here, and we want to recognize him for his, his actions. So, Mr. Columbus, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be, that is a challenge for you. Take it to, I'm sure you can get a free ice cream over at...
Really?
Sorry. I'll leave a certificate for you too, so.
Oh, thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you, Officer.
We need a picture, come on up here, I need a picture with you. I'll go the other way. I'll take the picture, you guys get up here. You guys nominated.
We woke him up at 5:00 in the morning. Actually, we woke up his wife.
I never heard the phone. Luckily, she did. Do you want some?
Yeah. Actually, I...
Alicia, let's get my phone, it's on every night.
Mark, come over here.
It's odd to be...
You stay there.
Congratulations.
Are you displaying your awards?
Thank you, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, number seven, Matters on the Floor. We've got a number of matters on the floor here, I'll read your name and come on up and address the council, to not answer your questions, but we'll consider those at future council meetings. Sarita Nelson. Sarita? Yep, no problem.
All right, Sarita Nelson, I've lived here for 10 years now. I want to thank Mark Cook, Councilmember Cook. He's the only one who responded to an email I sent a couple of weeks ago, and back and forth, tried to meet with me with my concerns, I didn't hear from anybody else. That's very frustrating. Driving down the road a couple of weeks ago with Kenny, we're getting ready to take him to work, we were talking about families out with their kids, riding bike, all of the fun stuff, on a nice summer day, it's two days. Kids have been out of school, turn a corner, and there's a huge vehicle parked sideways in front of the house behind Borbom, with someone sitting on top pointing something at that house. Scared the hell out of me, pardon my language. Looked down behind a car is a guy with a gun, trained on that house. I know, we do trainings here in Osseo, I fully recognize that, and we have not been getting noticed for those trainings every single time. I'm a very emotional person when it comes to guns, I cry. I spent that whole day in tears, because Osseo was never on my radar as having that kind of training, SWAT training here. Vehicles down the road, people in uniforms that I, it was like we're playing army in Osseo, right off of Main Street, right behind our primary park that people use. That is not what Osseo has stood for for the last 10 years for me. I was very upset. I have been fine with training going on in Osseo, because I thought it was K-9 training and just local police departments in the area. I had no idea we were going to be renting it out for other uses, like SWAT training, and that there would be zero recognition that the residents need to know about it. I'm here tonight because when Kenny put this out on our page, I'm not the only one who had concerns, I'm not the only one who felt like this. I hate speaking in front of everybody, I don't want to be here, I leave that to Kenny because he's better at it. But for the people that I did speak with privately, and on that page, I'm here to tell you guys, I'm charging the four of you... I'm here to tell you guys, I'm charging the four of you and whoever else gets that, this seat to do the work. That building, those houses, that area should no longer be rented out without your say-so. You don't give away free stuff through the community center or our business sign without having terms, protocol, do the work. Because the rest of us didn't deserve that scare that day. And again, I'm probably more emotional than anybody else is gonna say it. But I did not like that. I would never have expected that. I would think a small town up in, in Anoka where they have houses that aren't on Main Street probably would have worked. Um, secondly, as far as financing goes here in Osseo, we're a tiny town. I'm sorry. Fix the things that need to be fixed in this building. Bring that stuff forward. That's what we're willing to pay for. Not everybody has the money to think we can build new. We don't have that. Buying the cannabis location, I sure hope that works out because that just sounds like a pipe dream. That we're putting all of these hopes and dreams into something that we don't know that that's gonna work out or not. I ask you four, residents message you, take it seriously. You work with us and for us. And I said it the first time I was here back in 2020. We vote you guys into office. We ask you to do the job. Show up for us. We are more than willing to work with you guys. That's why I'm here. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
So I mean, this Kenny Nelson?
Uh, Kenny Nelson. Um, first, I'd like to take a, ask that we take a moment of silence to, uh, just remember our neighbors that were murdered a few weeks ago. Uh, thank you. Uh, next, I'm going to, um, address, I did not give my address. Uh, you didn't ask for it and I appreciate that. Uh, in lights of the events that happened over the last few weekends, um, but even before that, um, with you wanting to, us to fill out slips and give addresses and do all that, um, you know, I, I think maybe with the small town, we should really, really rethink that. Um, because obviously, I think most people know where I live. I know where three of you live. Could probably figure out where everyone else lives if I wanted to. Um, just don't. Um, and I didn't find out where you live because I was trying to do anything bad or anything else. It was a sidewalk project I was curious about years ago. Um, I mean, it's a small town, so, um, but with the light of, you know, things over the weekend, um, even, even me saying stuff up here and I serve on different boards, um, you know, having our addresses out there is becoming more concerning. I know Mark and other people have spoken that it's, it's an unruly piece. And I think, you know, it's, it's government. We need to think about that even on the smallest level. Um, I'm not a fan of this filling out a card thing. I think we're a pretty small town. Um, you know, one of the things we had and we went, we went and declared independence was this right to, uh, declare grievances to our government. And, you know, just one little extra piece of paper to, for us to have to do that might not sound like a lot, but, you know, lots of people complain about having to do permits and everything else. But that's, uh, that's my take on it. It's been brewing for some time and I just haven't had the opportunity to come up here and say anything. Um, next, I'm gonna show a photo up here. Um, this is a screenshot from a few weekends ago in Minneapolis. I think we're all aware of the, uh, upset and unrest that sparked over homeland security conducting a raid down there. Um, as you can see, this is a hu- armored up Humvee. You have, uh, FBI agents at Homeland, who knows? They're wearing, uh, military fatigues, camouflage, full-on rifles. You know, back in the day, it seemed like the FBI, unless they were doing a SWAT raid, wouldn't dress like that. But, um, apparently, they're dressing like that all the time now. And so on, um, a couple Tuesdays ago, Tuesday, a little, uh, I driving down the street and this is what I, I see directly in front of me. It looks like, at the time, it looked like a guy with a fifty cal pointed at our yellow house. And it took me, even though I serve on the PSAC community, it took me a second or two to remember that that's our, our house. Um, there was no warning, anything in the city. You guys had a council meeting that night. You could have taken that opportunity to tell the community that we were gonna have that. I think we could have thought about what that image is and how upsetting people were to see our federal government dressing like that and treating citizens like that. And I, I have to think they're doing it on purpose. And the reason I'm bringing it up to you, and I don't like to bring in what the federal government does here, but people live here. They have a right to feel safe in this community. They love it here. They have to trust our police. They don't necessarily have to trust the feds. We didn't get a say in it. We do when we vote, but we get a say in what our community does here. And when we bring in, when, when the federal government wants to just show tactics and show force and do whatever else and we can, I'm not looking to have a discussion, but there's plenty of people in this community that feel that's what's happening. And so we have to, as a community, ask ourselves, is it worth burning trust with our community to, to offer Anoka sheriffs the opportunity to train in our city? I don't think it's worth it. I would ask that any further training being done in the city, we at least get a, um, permit. Um, this is, uh, this is the funeral home parking lot. You see, we have at least, I think we counted about thirty officers there. We require a permit for our march down, for our Halloween march down Central for nearly everything. Um, I don't see why allowing thirty-five people from an area to use our community for training shouldn't require a permit. Um, I know that you've given your say-so. I've never heard, um, and I do, I haven't paid as much attention at the beginning of the year, but I've never heard, um, uh, say that we're allowing SWAT training to happen in our community. Um, I have a cousin that, uh, worked at Hennepin County. He now lives out in Iowa. He's in the National Guard. Um, very familiar. We have good training facilities, uh, throughout the state in Kulin and Camp Ripley where they could participate. And I get the different training, especially over the weekend. But I think that the question should be, um, whether it needs to happen here? If, if this was a real-life event, we'd be, we'd be courting off. We'd be asking people to shelter in place. Um, this is the soldier, the cop. You could see, he's got a sniper rifle, for lack of another term, hiding behind a minivan. I, uh, not even a block before that, I saw a probably a three-year-old toddler riding his bicycle around. I'm not saying that, uh, we can't have that in this community. I prefer not to see it. But, uh, I think, I think we should be a little more, um, listening to what some of our community members buy, because we're not gonna agree on it. There's gonna be people that see no problem with this and I have no problem with that. That's their right. But there are plenty of people in this community that do have a problem with that. And so I think you should ask yourselves, again, is it, is it worth burning that capital for it? Um, that's up to you guys. I don't wanna, I don't have the time to sit up there. If I did, and I wanted to make these decisions, I'd put my name on the list to be up there. Um, I just do not have the time. And that's, uh, one of the things I did not mean, I'm not trying to get a gotcha moment or anything else. I meant to try and find time to come up here today and talk some of this matter beforehand. I don't, I'm, I'm busy. I've been on vacation for a week and stuff did not work out. Um, um, lastly, I'd just like to, um, well, second last, uh, as far as the park goes and the community center, I would definitely disagree with that. Uh, I thank Mark Schultz, uh, years ago. It's his idea to buy those houses. He pushed it forward so we'd have that park. We've been talking about that park for forty years, I think. Because I'd been talking about it twenty years before he pushed it forward. We finally own all the houses and we're gonna get that expanded park to give up community center for wedding venues. So other people that probably don't live here can come have a nice wedding in our city over the weekend and rent out our park, basically. I just, I don't think that's a wise decision. Um, you're never gonna get an opportunity to expand the park or any other park really in the city. We, as, uh, Mark Cook said, we have to go up, not, not out. And you, uh, if you give up half that park, you're never gonna get it. We've been working on it for forty years. When I moved into town ten years ago or so, I thought it was great, park expansion. We're, we're gonna see it and still waiting for it. I still have hopes for it. Um, and lastly, um, I, I'm not questioning the need to buy new computers. Um, but I've, with money, if you're aware, except for the beginning part of this year, I've watched every city council meeting and work session, um, for many years. And I've never seen us buy basically the entire staff new computers. Um, I could be wrong, but it seemed like just about everybody's name was on that list for new computers for tonight. Um, not saying we don't need to, but, um, that's a, that's a first. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, is it, is it Tia? Tia?
Hello, I'm Tia Domban. Uh, I have lived in Osseo for almost five years. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I'm here as a candidate for the city council appointment. Um, I've watched our community grow and evolve and I've seen the challenges we face and incredible potential we have. Tonight, I want to share why I'm committed to serving this community and that I, what I hope to bring to this council. My commitment to service runs deep. As someone who's worked in business development while volunteering regularly at the food group and serving on nonprofit boards, I understand both the practical side of getting things done and the importance of community care. My seven years of managing childcare for a nonprofit, uh, taught me, I'm gonna ignore this. Um, I've worked in childcare for seven years prior to business development and honestly, it gave me a great idea for what communities need and what families are looking for in communities. Uh, more and more, Osseo is turning into a family neighborhood over a retirement area. Um, and what families are looking for does vary greatly based on their community and who they are. But overall, we are shifting to a more family-focused area. And, I mean, me, I'm thirty-one. I just married, uh, my husband within the last year and that's something. I mean, I'm excited to start a family in Osseo. I know that that's coming and I'm, I'm very excited for that. And so the thought of being able to really work with other members of this council to move forward in making this more and more of a family-focused area, I truly honor the thought of that. Um, I have thought about how to get involved with the community for honestly years. Since I moved here, uh, in December of 2020, I've been thinking about it and the timing has not been right. And I'm in a new position at work and I'm really focused on community involvement. Uh, I've volunteered probably a dozen times at the food group within the last year. Uh, I volunteered with Children's Minnesota. I volunteer a lot of different places. And honestly, the more and more involved with community I get, the more and more I want to be involved with the governance of the community that I live in. Um, and if that's not a city council appointment here tonight, that's okay. I still want to find out what other committees there are. I want to know where openings are. And I still am interested in helping this community where I can, however I can. Um, so, thank you so much for your time. I truly appreciate it. Uh, I appreciate you listening to me and I appreciate the time and especially meeting most of you for the first time in the last week. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. All right, Carrie.
Hello, I'm Carrie Keen and I'm seeking the open city council position. Um, I've lived here in Osseo for over eighteen years and I stay here because I love the small-town feel. And that is something I cherish. And that's why I stay a small town in a big city. Um, it's perfect for me. Um, I've shared my experience and my interest with most of you in pretty good detail for some of you. So I won't go into much of detail here tonight, but I think what I bring is, uh, twenty years of experience in strategic planning and budget, excuse me, budget management at a scale that is very similar to that of the city. So I've worked at very large corporations and, um, everything you talked about, your work session today is what I deal with every day. Um, I don't, like I said, I don't need to go into a lot of detail, but I do want to add that what I know of the other people that put their name in for this position is that I think they're all deserving. Um, honestly, I wish you could just vote in all six of them. I think it's really fascinating on how different everybody is and how everybody brings something different. So, uh, I think no matter what decision you make tonight, it's not a wrong one.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that's the last matters on the floor. All right, eight public hearings, no public hearings this evening. Number nine, old business, no old business in front of us. Ten, new business. Ten A, award pavement maintenance contract. Welcome, Allison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, before you this evening is a request, um, to award a contract for pavement maintenance for this year. As the council may recall, earlier this year, uh, we brought forward plans to, um, do some, uh, crack filling and bring back seal coat, uh, with a fog seal on top of it to kind of get those chips down, um, in some of the areas, um, that in previous street projects. So specifically, we were looking at, uh, the twenty-twelve and twenty-fourteen projects, um, to do crack fill in that area and then the chip and fog seal, um, in the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen projects. Uh, confirmed with the finance director, uh, late last week that there is, uh, one hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars budgeted for this. Uh, we, we submitted a request for quotes to three contractors. Uh, we received one quote. Uh, we heard back from one contractor saying they just weren't interested in, in quoting the project, um, due to the, the time of year and we have not been able to, uh, get ahold of the other contractor. The quote that came in, uh, was from Allied Blacktop Company in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, Allied Blacktop, Allied Blacktop Company, um, is well-known throughout the metro area. They do quite a bit of this work, so there's no concern, um, from our standpoint as far as their, their ability to perform the work. Uh, we did provide specifications, uh, for this work indicating that it would be, it would need to be completed by August thirtieth. Uh, so should council, uh, choose to award the contract tonight, we would, um, connect with the contractor to get the schedule from them and then update not only staff and council, but also, um, through what we've typically done in the past is, um, provided that information so that it can go out through social media so that folks can, in the neighborhood can know, um, what would be happening with this project. Uh, it's very minimal disruptions to traffic. It's, it's a pavement maintenance, so it's not like we're digging up the streets. Um, but it's a, it's a surface treatment to these streets, um, with a minor inconvenience. So with that, we are making a recommendation for council to award the contract to Allied Blacktop Company. And I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Counsel questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Hello, Allison. Um, so I thought I had read somewhere in here, so there were three that were sent out, but only one contractor actually submitted a bid.
That's correct.
And what was the reason the other two didn't submit?
Um, that's, so the one contractor we weren't, we didn't hear back from, um, at all. And then the other contractor just indicated that they, they weren't interested in submitting a, a quote and at this time of year, um, their, their screws are likely just full with all the work that they have.
Is this, I mean, is that something that's kind of common? Or, I mean, it's just, the, the struggle is whenever you have a project, you obviously want to do, you know, RFPs, RFIs to try to get the best price for the city. Um, it's just a little concerning when kind of the choice is, okay, here's your one and this is what it costs, right? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Understood, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Torres. I, I appreciate that concern. Um, when we, when we look at, uh, the quote that came in, it was, it was in line with what we were projecting for an estimate. And I can, I can appreciate council, um, you know, when you get one quote, um, you, you know, you'd like to, to have some numbers for comparison. Um, unfortunately, we just weren't in circumstance with this that we, that we were able to get more than one quote. Um, but as I mentioned, it's, it's within that, but that, uh, that amount that we had been estimating. Um, and again, from a reputable contractor that we feel confident can, can perform the work. Um, and, and so that's why we came forward with the recommendation that we did.
Thank you.
Sorry. Have we used Allied Blacktop in the past?
Um, uh, Mayor Poppy, Councilmember Cook, I'm not aware of Allied performing any work in the community, um, but as I mentioned, I've, I- Um, but as I mentioned, I've, I've worked with them um in other communities before and very comfortable with the work that they perform.
And this is, this is all part of the budget of this, I mean, this was all budgeted for this, this piece of the, of the project?
That's correct.
Councilmember Cook, sorry, yeah. We, we came, I think, in front of council a while back to try to do our pavement maintenance because it was in big chunks instead of smaller ones over length of time. So you guys did that. Yep, that's already been taken care of and we do have a enterprise fund to, to cover the cost.
Yeah, yeah, we're always four, five hundred thousand every few years. We just chunked it out. That was our discussion a few months.
There's no assessments or anything related to this?
No, it's part of the pavement management.
And this is an extension, I think it was like a month ago or so, where we talked about the various types, the fog and all that, right? Yeah, I remember this now.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion uh accepting the resol- the, the, accepting the quote to approve the resolution accepting the quote and awarding the contract for the two thousand twenty-five pavement maintenance project to Allied Blacktop for one hundred and ten thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
But the total project cost is more than that with the engineering costs.
I'm just reading right off the sheet.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, so I, I provided two numbers to the council. Um, and so the, the number that Councilmember Cook provided in his motion is correct because we are looking to authorize um awarding the contract. So that one hundred and ten thousand dollars is the correct number. Thank you.
All right, we had a motion by Councilmember Cook to adopt the resolution accepting the quote and awarding the contract for the twenty twenty-five pavement maintenance project. Is there a second?
Say it.
Say it by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? See, non-attorney teaching, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number thirty-five. Councilmember Schultz.
Hi.
Councilmember Cook.
Hi.
Councilmember Torres.
Hi.
Mayor Poppy.
Hi, motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
All right, ten, be appoint a city council member.
Mayor, council, um, I think there's been quite a bit of talk and buzz within the staff and with council as far as um to appoint our fifth member. Um, so tonight, we're asking the council to consider appointment to Osseo City Council vacant seat. Um, former councilmember Holstrom resigned at the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Council adopted resolution twenty-five dash three-two, accepting the resignation and declaring a vacancy on the council. The council directed staff to accept letters of interest from individuals in the community interested in serving on the council, fulfilling the remainder of the council term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um, by Tuesday, June seventeenth at noon, we received five letters and I'm sorry, I'm not going to read everybody's names because I know I'll butcher a, a few of them. So I apologize. I just, I don't want to go down that road. But we've had conversations, a, a couple of them or a few of them have spoken here tonight. Um, so we just want the council to consider those interested in the position. Um, a motion to appoint one person to fulfill the remainder of the unexpired council term.
Mr. Mayor. Yep, just for clarification, I, I think in, in one point in here, it says we received five letters.
Sorry.
There are six, right?
Six, yep.
Okay, yeah. It just says, the city received a total of five letters of interest, but then it lists six people.
Yep, it should be six people, yeah, six letters of interest. That was a typo.
Just clarification.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Torres. I know you're chomping at the bit to say something.
Aren't I always? All right. Um, so, I just wanted to convey to the rest of my council members and to staff. And because staff is going to be working with whoever we choose, which is an important consideration. I, unfortunately, I didn't get to talk to staff as much as I had hoped to, but I was able to get a little bit of a sense of things. Um, what was more important is I did have an opportunity to meet face-to-face with three of the six applicants. Of fourth, um, I've talked to on numerous occasions, so I, I didn't really feel it necessary because I saw their, saw the, the letter that they wrote and I know them pretty well. Um, I want to thank, first of all, everybody that submitted. Um, I, every one of them that I read was a really good letter of intent. Um, the face-to-face, I had some really good conversations and as some people know, some very long conversations. Um, but I had a really good sense, I felt like I had a really good sense once I left those conversations with who it was that might be sitting up here. Um, that is not to detract from the people that weren't able to meet. Um, I know there were some personal things going on uh in their lives so that they couldn't meet and their schedules just didn't align. So, in and of itself, my decision was not based on simply if you met with me or not. Um, I kind of took everything in. That was my process. So I'll just be completely transparent what my process was. Um, I read over what was written. I kind of looked at what was being conveyed through the, the, the uh submissions. And then when I spoke to the folks that I was able to speak to face-to-face, it was really kind of, it wasn't like an interview, although at times it may have felt a little bit like that, but I was really trying to look for some very certain things, which is, what was the level of commitment? Why were you even interested, you know, broadly and specifically for Osseo? Um, and I'm going to kind of read from some notes here so that I don't drone on forever. Out of the ci- out of all the applications, I thought they were all really good. Uh, the conversations were really good. And this is quite frankly, not an easy decision, at least for myself. Um, because I had to sort through a lot of different things. There were a lot of really outstanding qualities across the board. And I think as one applicant said tonight, it's like, okay, this is, it's kind of really cool in the sense that it was a really good pool of community members um to choose from. So, what I broke it down to is I based my decision on kind of the relevant skills and capabilities of each individual, personal experiences that they've had, personal life experiences that they've had. Passion and vision for the community was very important and how well-articulated that was, both in the written and when we met. Um, availability to serve was a really big thing. As we all know, this is a job. I mean, and for some of us on some committees, even more so than some other committees. Not to detract from those other committees. Um, so when I kind of put all of those things together and thought about how the person looked on paper, how they looked or the sense that I got from speaking with them, I put all these factors together. I kind of thought through it. And I will, I'll, I'll say it right now, the person that I came up with, and this is not a detraction on anybody else, but the person I, that really stood out for me was Tia Dombin. And I would support a nomination for Tia based on what I just said.
Mr. Mayor. Yep. So, much the same as uh Councilmember Torres, um, I actually had a chance to talk face-to-face via Zoom um or in person with uh four of the six applicants. I was out of town on a pre-planned um trip for several months and so I was in the middle of the woods. So I couldn't connect up with some of the people, which is, which was problematic for me, but one of the things that I was struck is, is that the quality of people that applied for this. Um, there's a lot of really good people and I appreciated hearing what Carrie had to say and, and to say that there's not going to be a bad decision here made this evening because we've got a lot of really capable people. When I looked through everything, I was very impressed with my, with my conversations with people. I was also very um uplifted, to be honest with you, because to acknowledge the work that um I've been doing here since two thousand and ten, to be able to be recognized by people as being a benefit and the things that we've done. And the challenge with Osseo, of course, as we've alluded to many times, is how do you evolve a city into something different and attractive when you don't have much to work with as far as land and when you don't want to disturb the character of the community? That's very difficult to do. Being as it, this is a appointment that is going to basically be hitting the ground running because we've got a lot of really, really big things that are in front of us. Um, it was a very difficult decision. Um, it's taken me a long time to get to this point. My perspective is that looking at everything, we have somebody that applied that is a seasoned community leader, um seasoned community service person, spent their entire career serving the community, which is a, a very important thing, understanding the perils and pitfalls of that. So, um, for me, my top candidate um this evening, it would be Tom Hartkoff.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, I also um did, was able to, to talk to, I think, five of the six, um, with the sixth one being on a, on a family trip away. So he was unable to, to, to ta- talk, but I was able to at least have a conversation with everybody and, and I, you know, speaking third, you guys have said everything that I was going to say, so, um, you know, I won't take that long. Uh, but we do, we have, we have an incredible group of candidates and, and, you know, I'll, I'll be honest with you. As I sit in here and I listen to Nick give his, you know, his explanation and I, and I listen to, to Mark, to you, Mark, you give yours. I, I think those are two really, really great candidates. I, I really do. And, and I, I wrestle with the experience piece that you're, that you're talking about, hitting the ground running, you know, probably not having a, a steep of a learning curve, being somebody, you know, Tom has sat on, you know, committees and has, like you said, served the community for quite a long time. Um, you know, there's also something to be said about a new perspective, um, and, and a new vision and new views and, and, um, you know, some, some things, some, maybe some new ideas and things like that. And so, um, so yeah, that I'll be honest with you, as, as I, I sat here and I told, I told all of the candidates that, that I spoke with, I said, I literally am going to come into that meeting and I'm going to listen to the conversation um and hear what people have to say a- a- and then go from there and then make a decision. Because I, I was very interested to hear what my colleagues' um perspectives on it. But I, I, I think we have some incredible candidates. And, and so I, I do think it's an interesting thing. Um, I, I'm just, I'm, having gone through this, I, you know, many of you know, I went through this process. I went through this process three times. Um, and it, and it, and it, it is a very, and I heard all the same things. I heard the, you know, hey, you know, you just, this other person's already been sitting on committees, they're already ready to go, they can step in, they can fill that gap quicker. You know, this person had more previous, you know, city experience and da-da-da-da, and this person's going to be able to step in and do, yeah, you know, you, Mark, just get involved, get involved, get involved. So I did, I, you know, I got involved on public safety. I got involved on PDA and I, I did all those things. Um, and even the third time, wasn't a, wasn't a unanimous choice by any stretch of the imagination. Um, and so, y- you know, it's one of those things, I, I really do genuinely see both sides of this perspective in the sense of this idea of bringing somebody in like Tom with, with, you know, just a, a huge level of, of existing experience, but then also bringing in one of these other candidates who, you know, might have a different type of, of perspective on things that maybe, maybe is needed right now. So, that's what I'm wrestling with. So, but I'll be interested to hear other people's.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
They actually had to speak to that. So, Tom was in kind of like top, if I had a top like three or whatever. But what it dawned on me in, in thinking about that specific point, Tom is already involved currently with city government. Um, he is on the Public Safety Committee and that affords the community an opportunity for Tom's perspective to be heard. So by putting somebody other than Tom onto the council allows for that extra perspective. So it's kind of like you get two for one, right? We still get Tom regardless. He still can influence policy. Uh, he can let his voice be heard. And if we bring Tia in, that offers that new perspective. It's an, uh, you know, newer to the community, understanding that the community is evolving. I loved what I heard from Matters from the Floor. Um, and that's not to say anything against Tom. I think Tom is a, is actually a great leader. I mean, he was former police chief. Um, he's a neighbor of mine personally. Um, but I would really like to see getting the most bang for our buck, if you will. And I think by nominating and bringing Tia on board, it speaks exactly to what you're talking about. We don't have to wrestle with, oh, which way do we go? Do we take old and se- not old, but do we take seasoned? Do we take new? Do we get fresh perspective? I think by bringing Tia in, that affords us to do exactly both. I don't know, it just, it, it just seems like the right thing. It's a, it's a forward-thinking choice. Um, and we get, we get both. We get both perspectives this way. If we put Tom on the council, sure, there's a different dynamic to the position, but in the end of the day, now we lose one voice. If I look at it from that perspective, we could have had somebody new and now we don't. We have a person that we're going to be able to, you know, get input from through one of very, very important committee. So, I would say that would be a compelling reason why to move forward with Tia in respect to what you're, what you were struggling with.
May I ask a question?
Uh, not right now, it's just council discussion.
It's about candidates for the office. I didn't realize it was going to be in, if I was going to speak on behalf of someone, that it had to be on Matters from the Floor. I thought it would be now. Are you allowing anyone to speak on behalf of a candidate?
Sure, why not? Go ahead, make, if you want to come up and kind of.
So, I'm here to endorse uh someone who I know and like, and his name is John Mark Halsted. He's a Hennepin County attorney. He works in uh child protective services. He's a smart guy. He's an honest guy. He's young. He's got a family. He's got a wife and he's got a three-year-old daughter named Kennedy. Um, he's interested in serving here and uh I think that Osseo would be lucky to have a young, energetic person to kind of uh maybe switch things up rather than just going for. I think he's plenty smart and he's, like I said, he's an attorney. He's a good man and that's why I'm here and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'd just like to say that this is the, one of the best uh members bodies that have come forward to volunteer. We haven't seen this amount of uh resume volunteers in quite some time on, on committees and everything else. And I would really like to encourage everybody who volunteered to step up, to uh be on the city council, to step up and join a committee. Um, people often ask, they say, oh, let's do something, but they don't like the way the dr- you guys are going up there. And I always say, well, you know what? It starts with the bottom up, join a committee. So, I'd just like to encourage everybody to join a committee. It's not that much work. Thank you.
More council discussion?
Well, I guess the only other thing that I would add is again, to consider the time commitments. Uh, I, I don't know how to put it without putting it in a bad way, so I'm just not going to put it, but that there's, I have concerns with other candidates other than the one that I named to move forward with, not that they're not committed to it, but the fact that they're simply not here in the wintertime. So, it's, you know, and if they're, if they were to choose not to go south for the winter, that, that's fine. But ag- again, I just keep falling back on this fact that we get to, we get our cake and we get to eat it too if we choose somebody that's not on a current committee right now. And again, this isn't anything for any of the other candidates less, it's just the one I think possessed, ticked off every one of those boxes that I mentioned. And in fact, if you look at, I'll, I'll end with this. If you look at the actual written, it's in the, it's in the packets. If you look at the actual written letters that were sent in, look to the one that spoke to each one of those factors that I mentioned. It's not to say that the other ones weren't passionate, well, not to say the other ones aren't skilled or, you know, couldn't do a good job. But I think even that point helped make it an easier choice for me because that Tia's specific letter included every aspect of what I talked about. It talked about future, it talked about skills, it talked about, this is where I came from, this is my history, this is, it was all right there. And I think that was the most, it was the most detailed of all of the, of all the submissions as well as what we heard tonight from Matters of the Floor. So I'm, I'm again going to strongly advocate Tia. advocate Tia Domben for the position.
Yeah, I mean, looking through all of these, I think, like you said, it's all great candidates. I'm excited for the future Osseo here. I think, you know, we've got a lot of people, you know, hopefully they continue to have interest to be involved, you know? I mean, that's like, Councilmember Cook took his lumps to finally get on the election cycle, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Just for all of you too, is that we have your emails now, so when they're committee assignments, if you're not on the council, I will be reaching out to you to ask you to come and put in a letter for any other, I'm just saying, to, to help us out, 'cause I was super excited to see this many people, and I've been through this three, two, three times now.
Yeah.
Uh, in my position in the last year, so it is nice to know, if that doesn't happen, I have your emails now, so I will be sending you particular stuff that we may have coming up, especially towards the end of the year, we have people up for different positions and things. And so this is so, I thought it was great. I think it's cool that we had this many people willing to put their names in the hat to take on something that, as, as we're all finding out, can be very difficult, um, and very difficult decision-making. So, just, just throwing that out there, I have you now, I hope, so, I'll be sending you stuff.
So I'd like to make a motion to, I don't even, how do we read this? Is there a specific, do I have a specific thing that I've, a resolution, okay? I would like to make a motion to have Tia Domben appointed successor to serve the unexpired term of Councilmember Juliana Holstrom.
I get a motion by Councilmember Torres to appoint Tia Dob- Domben?
Domben.
Domben, to the vacant council position. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I noticed that you did not share an opinion. Like to hear what you have to say as well.
Yeah, I g- I guess my opinion, I mean, listen at all sides, and in my opinion, I, you know, of, I would say I concur with you. I think Tom's been a asset to the community for a long time, so, that's, I mean, I would... interactions with him and how he's been involved in the community, he would be, you know, my first choice.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
There's one thing that Tia said when she stood up here that really, uh, and I think you brought it up a little bit, but that, that really, um, and everybody, and Carrie spoke so well too, and, and you, the, the reality of it is, is that all of these candidates, um, you know, I had a great conversation with John Mark the other day too, and all of you guys have, have made it, you've made this a really, really difficult decision.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to be, to be perfectly honest, I mean, and, and that's a good, that's a good problem to be in, um, you know, for us, is that, you know, if this was just a no-brainer, you know, then it'd be, but, but the fact of the matter is, is that we have these incredible minds in our community, and these incredible people in our community that wanna give back. Um, you know, when, when, when Tia said something along the lines of, of Osseo's shifting and becoming more of a family-focused areas versus a retirement, you know, area, I think that that really jumped out at me with somebody who has, you know, small children and, and, and things like that, and just the, the, the idea of... I do really get excited about the idea of a new voice, a new, a new, a new perspective. Um, is there a learning curve? Hundred percent. But if you have a conversation with any of these people, you could hear the passion and the excitement in, in, in wanting to learn the position, and wanting to do the position well, and wanting to be, um, to work, to work with us. I don't, I don't think, I don't think in any one of these people you're bringing in, you know, any sort of, uh, somebody who wants to come in and upset the whole apple cart or, you know, this, that, or the other thing, um, or be difficult to work with, or any, like, every single one of them talked about, you know, communication and, you know, working together and, you know, things like that. And so, um, I think, you know, I, I think that, that I do tend to agree, uh, with Councilmember Torres in this one, that, that, you know, Tom has, and Tom is one of the people I respect as much as anybody in this entire town. Tom, Tom could come in and do this job, and, and it would be fine, it would be seamless, it would be, it would, there would be no issues. Um, Tom's had his turn, and he's done his things, uh, and he still continues to do them o- 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 on the, the Public Safety Committee. But the opportunity to bring somebody else in, um, eh, with just a new voice and a new perspective, I, I will be honest, it, it does excite me, and, and I think it's, I think it would be great for this council, um, to have that. So I would support it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I would like to echo that. I, it's, it's not that Tom isn't good enough, it's that we have an opportunity to have more. We get more perspective by adding somebody. If we, if we move forward with Tom, the struggle that I have with that is, okay, we've already, you know, having the history that he does, sure, he could hit the ground running, but this position is much more than just the ability to show up two weeks from now and understanding how government works. And it's, it, it, uh, it's not that the passion's not there, I'm sure he has passion, he has, he has a lot of passion. I mean, I've seen him speak at Public Safety. Um, I think we would be remiss if we pass on the opportunity, as Mark said, to bring in fresh ideas, new ideas. We've got somebody who is new to the community, that's what I liked about all the folks that I sat and spoke with, was it was fresh perspectives. You know, there's a perspective you have from living here for thirty years, there's a perspective that you have when you move here from somewhere else, and it's only been five years, or it's only been, you know, even ten years. That's a new perspective that's gonna be helpful and healthy for the community. Um, it's not that I believe Tom would ever do anything against, you know, the, this, the community moving forward and moving in a good way, but there's something to be said about living in a community for thirty years, and you kinda, that's a thirty-year opinion. We need some fresh opinion, we need some new ideas, we, and we need the skills. There are skills that Tia brings above and beyond just city government, you know? There's, there's the skills about community involvement, there are skills in the management of, of government. So, I just really feel strongly that we can still have Tom's influence while still getting all the benefits of somebody new. And it would be just a shame to lose that opportunity to have fresh perspective, especially when we're looking at, we're taking the place of twenty-six-hundred people's, well, not twenty-six-hundred people's votes, but all the voting public in this, in this city. The four of us are going to decide what normally all of those people decide. So I'll throw this perspective too. If I look at these folks running on a ticket or on a, on a, on a ballot, I think that would also be the person I support, because I think that's the person who would resonate with the most voters. Um, definitely I got the sense that, you know, and actually, all the people I spoke with were definitely not yes people. These were people that had their own mind, they liked to speak their own mind, they, they know their own mind, and they had some really good ideas for this city. I just feel we would be remiss not to put somebody new and get that new perspective. I think that the city deserves it, it's what would happen if this was an election.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Hearing no additional feedback, I'd like to call the question.
Sure.
Mayor.
Um, thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number Thirty-Six, so the motion is to appoint Tia Domben. Um, Councilmember Schultz.
Nay.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Nay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put another motion on the table, please. Um, I'd like to, to appoint Tom Harkoff to, um, the vacant spot through resolution.
Okay, I get a motion by Councilmember Schultz to appoint Tom Harkoff. Is there a second? Second that. All right, Attorney Tejin.
Um, same resolution, Council, uh, Resolution Thirty-Six.
What was that?
Is there no discussion on this?
Hope again, yeah.
Um, no, I, I mean, I do wanna, I do wanna discuss it, because I, I wanna, and maybe it's more of a clarification, we assume, we just, we just had a two-two vote. It ends up a two-two vote again.
Uh, pursuant to statute, the mayor makes the appointment, correct?
That was my...
I think, actually, I would like to hear more from the mayor on the decision for Tom Harkoff.
All right, it goes back to just his years of service in this community, understanding what's going on. Um, you know, I think he's, you know, has a great perspective. You know, I mean, I've talked to him over the years about a whole, whole lot of things.
So, my question, and respectfully, my question is, we already know what we have with Tom. What we don't know is what we have with somebody else. And that's why I go back to, we're remiss if we don't bring in something new, if we don't bring somebody in new. So, okay, sure, he's aware of things that are going on in the city, um, government-wise. I, I would assume, I don't even know that for a fact. I know that, you know, he's involved in Public Safety, he's gonna know those things. I don't know how well-versed he is on the current budget anymore than anybody else. I don't know that he knows what plans are to do with the water tower. I'm sure, you know, he ab- absolutely is gonna have an opinion on all these things. But just because somebody has been involved in government for thirty years doesn't necessarily make them the right person going forward. And all, the only thing that I've heard in support of his nomination is, he's been in the city thirty years, he knows government, he knows everybody in government. I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing vision, I didn't see any vision in the, in the letter. I didn't see, "Hey, these are the plans that I have." Um, I just, again, Tom is a great community leader. He's already in that position as a great community leader. We are never going to be able to grow as a city, I mean, I think of it like planting trees. Okay, if we already, we got a forest and we got an older tree, that doesn't grow the forest. I think by bringing in somebody like Tia, it's more than a sapling, but we are bringing in a new tree to the forest. The forest is gonna grow. The only way that, that, that we get these new ideas is by bringing in new blood, for lack of a better term. And I just, I cannot see how we pass up that opportunity, simply because we have a nominee who's been here for thirty years, has been involved in government, was in public service for many, many years, former police chief, stepped in to that role, actually, uh, when it was asked of him. So this is not to take anything away from Tom. What I'm trying to do is the exact opposite and bring more in for the city. So, you know, I don't know if that's a compelling argument for you, but I just, I truly feel there is much more to be gained by simply bringing on somebody who we already all know, who's already been there, done that. I mean, nobody's gonna learn how to do the job if they don't come in and start doing the job. So we can't use simply how long somebody has been involved in city government to choose for them to be in city government when with an opportunity like this presents itself. I think that it needs to be much more than that. It needs to be much more than this person can come in and start making decisions, because I don't, I think Tom is gonna have to get up to speed on a lot of things that are going on in the city. Mark and I are still coming up to speed, and we've been here for a while. So it's not like Tom's gonna be able to just walk in and go, "Oh, I got all the answers to all these things that we're doing." I think that he can still have that influence through his involvement that's currently there in government right now. We need new ideas, new thoughts. We have, just tonight at our working session, we have some very complex things to deal with here as far as these buildings and how we're gonna, you know, th- these massive projects, and Tia has those skills. Look at this application, she has skills in that area. She can help us think through budgets, she can help us think through those things. And then if we look at social things, like we have the Youth Activities Director that we're gonna be hopefully hiring, if we can ever get the state to do the things that they say they're gonna do for us, and I think we have somebody who's got experience in that area as well. So, okay, does Tom have, have experience with city government? Sure. Does he have experience with youth, youth activities, youth kids? I don't know. I know that this candidate does. So I think we need to look, before we make this vote, we need to look at the big picture, not just the, "Well, this one seems like a comfortable fit, this one seems like..." Because it is, Tom is a very comfortable fit. We cannot do wrong if we go with Tom. Not saying that he's, he's a bad choice, what I'm saying is he's the wrong choice, at least right now. If Tom, I'll, I'll leave the thought with this. This fall, or the next election cycle, okay, if I'm gonna grab my crystal ball and might be talking out of hat, but I'm gonna say it, who do I see running for that seat that's going to be held temporarily? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Administrator, it's just for Juliana's term, right, which ends next election cycle.
Yep.
Who do I think is going to be on that ticket? Is Tom gonna be on that ticket? I don't think so. Is Tia gonna be on that ticket? Well, from what I gathered, from tonight, and from our conversation, and from what I read, oh, I bet you, I will bet you dollars of donuts, Tia's gonna be on that ticket. So why wouldn't we put the person who's already gonna be running anyway on now? Let them start learning what they need to learn before the city elects them, because I think if, if Tia was a candidate, I think, just gonna put my politics hat on, I think she could make a heck of a run. I think a lot of the candidates, quite frankly, could make a very good run. But this one in particular, I, I just gotta look at, at, at November, who's gonna be on the ticket? I'm gonna go with the person who's gonna be on that ticket. That's why I'm going with Tia, and I would suggest, respectfully, that you consider that aspect as well when we do the final vote.
Mr. Mayor. So I don't wanna get into the prolific arguments that Mr. Torres is making out here. I'm not gonna disparage any candidate by trying to talk one over the other. I don't disagree with your assessment of Tia or any of the other candidates. Um, as I'm looking at this, I am hopeful that the candidates are going to step up for committees, get that experience that's necessary, um, and fill some of those roles, and I would be happy to see any of them on the ballot. I really would be. Um, but I'm not gonna go into a long presentation regarding the benefits of one versus the other. I don't think that's fair to the candidates. I just don't. I don't, I think that that's maybe even a little bit out of line. Um, so I'm just gonna stick with, with my assessment on this. I just believe that that's the right fit at the right time for where we're at right now. Um, I don't, I mean, you, you did talk about some different things that I don't really think were fair in talking about the, about Tom. Um, I don't know if you asked anybody else what their vacation plans were. Um, I don't know if you were, became well-versed on what the opportunities are to attend meetings. Um, I spoke with Tom, and he said, "I'll fly back." Okay, so I, I just don't, I mean, I appreciate the enthusiasm, the arguments, and I don't disagree that Tia is a great candidate. I think every single person here sitting is, is a phenomenal candidate, and we, you know, again, as I spoke of earlier, couldn't lose with any of the people on here, okay? But I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna stick with my position on Tom, and we'll see where it shakes out.
Well, that's, that's fair commentary, Councilmember Schultz. In fact, you're right, that was unfair of me to assume that Tom wouldn't be here in the winter. Um, so I'll actually, that, that's, that's fair comment. Um, it was just an assumption that I thought, given what I know from the last several years, but you're correct, I didn't ask him, and that was unfair to make that assumption. that was unfair to make that assumption. So I, for what it's worth, take that back. But that alone does not, does not change why I believe Tia's the best. And it's not that Tia is the best over somebody else. It's Tia is the best because of what she presents. Like, if I had to look at Tia's application in a vacuum, that's why I'm comfortable with this. When I put the other applicants up against it, I mean, you can't but look at a comparison. I mean, that's how we make our choices. So it's not that I'm putting one at the behest of another. It's when I look at all the factors that I pointed out when I first started speaking, I think we have a candidate that meets all of those factors. And again, it's, it's, I really can't stop from going back to this, having your cake and eating it, too. We do get to have Tom's input. It's just not up at the dais. And we have an opportunity to have somebody brand new that can come in. And, I mean, quite frankly, as far as it goes for getting seasoned, I had one, maybe two, EDA council or subcommittee meetings when I got appointed to EDA. Other than that, I had nothing coming up here. So as much as I am obviously still learning the ropes, it is, that is not the only reason not to bring somebody on is because they haven't been seasoned yet. People's life experiences can be all that it takes to be an effective leader up here. So, but I I completely take what you said for what it is. And thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I guess, you know, the reality of it is, is that we're, we're going to be fine with whatever decision is made. We're going to be fine. And I understand that. I just tend to agree that the experience piece doesn't always outweigh the importance of a new voice, new, new perspective, new, new, new things like that. And so that's why I tend to lean the way that I'm leaning. But, but ultimately, I think we've, we've probably kind of talked this to death, so.
With that, I'll call the question. Mr. Mayor.
Attorney Teigen.
Again, this is Resolution number 36. And this time, the vote, the motion is to appoint Tom Harkoff. Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Nay.
Councilmember Torres.
Nay.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye.
Mayor pursuant to Minnesota statute 412.02, in if the vacancy, I'm sorry, in the case of a tie vote, then the mayor makes the appointment.
I'll appoint Tom to the position. Thank you, everyone that applied, and hopefully we'll see you on committees.
Thank you very much.
All right, 10C, approve staff computer purchases.
Mayor, Council, this has been something that we've had some discussion about as far as our IT. I know we just got through having a discussion or kind of getting your computers up to date. And that was actually a, like a 2024 purchase that we made. And so we came through and and sat down, I think, at least once with Budget Committee as far as our IT department. And they gave some recommendations on these computers and how old they are, and then what to move forward with. I also want to make sure that you understand that currently, we're going to be getting rid of three desktop computers, and everyone's going to be going to a laptop-type computer. And so that is part of this, is we're not replacing those. I know the number is high. I understand that. But what happened is, is this stuff has been sitting there, and now Microsoft is getting rid of Windows 10, and some of our, our computers are not updatable because they are older, and we do a four-year replacement schedule. So these are all on schedule to be replaced. We currently have had another kind of budgeting issue that we're going to be talking about this year, and that is our current cable fund, which that was funded out of grant money and money from cable subscriptions. I think you've probably heard Councilmember Schultz talk about that since you're on that Northwest Community Cable Commission. Is that right? Did I say that right?
I am.
And I think you're the chair, correct?
I'm the chair of CCX Media, which is a nonprofit and the, basically, the branding arm of that.
Okay. So that money is starting to run out. And we, for years, have been able to upgrade all of our computers and processes through that fund. And so that fund now is to about $5,000 quarterly. And so we were looking at during the budget season this year to try to move, in my estimation, I'm not sure how that's going to work, but we would like to put that into the CIP and then start taking and branding computers and purchasing computers out of that. And so that's why I have in front of you is that we are getting new laptops, and then some of these laptops that may be able to be updated, but even if they're outdated, they're not connected to the network. We'd be able to use them as like internet computers. And so that would be something, especially in the Police Department Evidence Room, that does not need to be connected to our, our network as far as to go to our, all it needs to do is have internet connection to get to our MS. The front desk would be like a permitting slash public display computer. That would be where we'd have a TV put up to display things for people at the front desk. And now that our permitting is all online, we don't really have a good way of people at the front desk that may want to do it the old paper way to actually enter their information and apply for a permit. As you can see, that Council Chamber's laptop is old, and it's, it's had its day. We kind of had some problems with it today. And that's where we will be able to dedicate one. And it might be, you know, I think Councilmember Torres, you said your older computer was a Windows 11. So I mean, we're trying to use what we can of computers that we currently have. And then the community center training, we were, we were able to acquire a, a TV. So now we have a TV down there on rollers that's going to be used just for city business. And we'd like to have a laptop that connects to that so we can have presentations, do trainings. That's one part of the difference with the Police Department, is that now we have gotten large enough with enough staff that we can't fit in our building to do trainings. So we have to use the community center, and we were always using a projector. And at certain times of the day, it's very hard to see. And those were older screens and older projectors. And so a TV is not as expensive as replacing all of those things. So what my recommendation to Council as far as the budget, the total cost, about $26,000. These are natural. I don't know if you saw it tonight, but my computer shut off at one point. Mine is like five years old, so it gets little circles on it, and it's, I don't know, starting to not work. The battery doesn't work anymore. So these are up, needed updates to our technology. The total bill is $26,403.12 was what I got from our IT department element. These are the same computers that each of you, at least when Councilmember Torres comes up to get his computer. Reminder, reminder, Bueller. Just kidding. And, and they'll be the same ones that you guys have. And we're going to, like I said, we're going all to mobile computers because what we had before was some desktops and then take home, like laptops, when we were going through COVID. This way, we'll be able to, no matter what, we could switch out, and we wouldn't have any desktops. So this is also a small step into the future of maybe having everything up in the cloud. So those are conversations we're having internally also. But that's, we have the remaining funds in our balance, which is about $9,000 in the cable fund. And then utilize the equipment CIP to cover the remaining $17,000. That was a recommendation from me, just looking at our funds. This would be in the equipment part of the, the CIP. And we do have the funds in there. They are available. And we can use them. Again, during our budget time this year, we've got some choices to make, and we'll make those choices and come back to the council, full council, and talk about them as we go walk through them.
Mr. Mayor, so just to add into that, you know, it's not fun to have to replace en masse technology. We've been pushing this off for a long time. Unfortunately, Microsoft has drawn a line in the sand regarding Windows 10, and a lot of our computers that are currently running do not have the ability to be upgraded. For some of the computers that are going to be repurposed, there is also the option, which we would not get from Element, but something that we could look into specifically for internet-based machines. There are alternative operating systems that would function perfectly fine on some of these older laptops. You know, we ended up moving to laptops specifically as a COVID purchase because we couldn't have employees in the building. We needed to do that. So that was, that was done with federal and state COVID money allocations. So, you know, if the nature of some of these that can't be upgraded, or if they can, if there's security issues there, we do have the ability to go a different direction with the operating systems that, you know, Google has one, Linux is an operating system. I'm in my office right now, I'm using a, I think this thing's 15-year-old computer that I just, all I have it do is connect it up to the internet because that's all I need it for. Okay. You know, and they don't need to access Microsoft products. I mean, there's a lot of different things out there. So this is definitely something that we can't put off anymore because Microsoft isn't going to let us. We could put it off a couple of months, still be more expensive at that point in time. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of the 10 laptops.
I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the staff computer purchases. Is there a second?
Second.
My Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion?
The only, the only thing I would, I would bring up or I would say, and I don't, I don't know, because I know that this is a, it's an issue when you're buying in bulk. Like here, you know, you're buying many computers at the same time, is that maybe moving forward, we have some sort of a upgrade schedule, kind of a waterfall schedule.
We do.
But then we have to stick to it.
Correct.
So that, and I, and I understand, I wasn't here for that. So that's all I'm saying, is that then, then we as a council, and I know there was a lot of turnover, but, but that we don't find ourselves in five, six years in this exact same position where we're buying 15 new computers all at the same time, that we could maybe spread that cost out over the course of a few years.
That is the plan.
Yeah. And so that, that's all. I, I, it just is, we have to do this right now. There's no question. There, there's no, I'm not against this. I'm just thinking that as we move forward, we have to just be.
And that's part of the capital improvement plan and be able to schedule that stuff.
And I just want to reiterate to your point, we have had this. It's just that previous councils were unable to take an action step forward. So we've had technology replacement schedules for over 15 years. But when the council refuses to act, it's, there's only so much we can do until we could put it, our back up against the wall, which put us in this position.
And if it helps at all, from a technology perspective, one upside with not doing the waterfall is, like you said, buying en masse, right? So it's kind of 50/1, half a dozen of the other, right? Because if you piecemeal, then you're not going to get as good a break on pricing.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, 10D, approve council payable. Questions in the?
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve tonight's council payable. Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, number 11, Administrator Report.
No report.
Assistant Administrator Vickerman.
No report.
Good. Council and attorneys, report. Attorney Teigen.
I have no report.
Okay. Councilmember Torres.
No report.
Councilmember Cook.
I just want to, just again, take a second to thank everybody that applied and, and sat through all the conversation and, and then everything. And, and again, I hope, in the conversations I had individually with all of you, you know, shared with you, that I, I've been in your seat, and I, and I have, I've, I've sat out there and listened to those conversations and listened to people talk about you, as if you're not just sitting right in front of them, and, and then say, say all kinds of things about you that you're like, well, I wish I could kind of rebuttal that, but no, that's okay. So I have absolutely been where you, where you are. And, and I just, I hope that, use that, the disappointment to fuel you in your future endeavors in, in this city, because I, I do think you guys are all, I, I'll be very honest. I mean, I'm not up for reelection again for a little while yet, but you guys make me nervous when I am, because there's some really, really good young people in this, in this community that want to do really good things. And so I'm excited that hopefully you'll, you will continue to get involved despite the disappointment tonight. But thank, thank you for being here, and thank you for sticking around, and I, I appreciate that. So with that, I yield.
Councilmember Schultz.
So I echo Councilmember Cook's comments. This was a very difficult decision to make this evening. And, you know, it, it, my recommendation would probably be different. Matter of fact, I know it would be totally different if we didn't get an application from Tom. I mean, I probably wouldn't have been in lockstep. And so I really want to encourage you to keep involved because you're very impressive in the conversation. And the only thing worse than this is running for council and losing. So, but other than that, I just want to thank all the people that applied. I, I was very renewed from just the whole aspect of going through this. And I, I did talk to, like I said, most of them, four of, four to the six of them, at length, you know, very in-depth. And I was very encouraged, more so now than I can honestly say I have been in the last several years, that we have some really good leaders coming forward. And I really, really want you to get involved. And I'd be happy to support anybody on this for committee nominations. And the reality of it is, is that in those situations, we got to make difficult choices. But, I mean, that's what comes with this seat. So thanks again.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, 14, adjournment.
Still moved.
A motion by Councilmember Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Torres, non-abiable. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We're adjourned at 8:49.